So I have six thirty?
Okay, so it is. Six thirty, so I'm calling to order the March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Brooklyn Planning Board. First agenda item is minutes.
Before we do that, Norm, I'll bring the, I'll open up the bylaw subcommittee at six thirty one two.
Meeting minutes of March eleventh.
I didn't have any notes.
Questions, comments, or anything else?
Oh, it's written well. Yeah, I didn't have anything. I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes, March, uh, March eleventh.
Second. Yeah, sorry, just making sure I looked at the right.
Any discussion? Earring on, all in paper.
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay, item two. Little bit interesting here, discussion on Hilltop Estates Truck Route.
Can I say a little something? So, at the last meeting, after discussion with the public, the planning board, DPW director and the public, made an amendment to the special condition for Hilltop Estates, where truck traffic would be allowed to come through Grizzly Drive, what, um, what subdivision is that, Norm? Is that Bryce Lemon?
Bear Hill.
Bear Hill.
Bear Hill and Highlands and Brunel.
So, it was, it was good intentions, but in the days following, Austin, um, made it, made, um, made an observation and Chris came into the annex and we talked about it. And I wanted to bring this back before the board because it seems like in an attempt to resolve one issue with truck traffic on Brittenall Drive, the solution may have created a bigger issue. And that's why I made a copy of the truck route, the route that the truck would have to take. And the biggest concern is, if you look down where it looks, where it shows lots eighteen, nineteen, forty-five, and thirty-nine.
Down at the intersection of Grizzly Drive.
Making that turn.
Yeah, and not only is it a hairpin turn, it is a, is a steep downhill. Austin and I drove through this area today and did a site visit. And the concern is, um, there were a few concerns that, that Austin had with this. As one is that, and Chris confirmed that trucks would have, especially if they're a certain size, almost impossible time navigating that turn going downhill and braking at the same time. Coming uphill is just as bad. The other thing is that a portion of this subdivision has been, the roadway's been in for a while and it's not in the best shape. That there is some cracking happening, spider cracking along the way, so.
On Vista Circle, it definitely.
Vista is already in rough shape.
Yeah. How long has that been complete?
Not long enough. Yeah. Not long enough for it to be in the shape it's in.
It's only twelve years old, I think, max.
That was Lenny Gengels.
So, so that's why I wanted to bring this back before the board to see if the board would like to reconsider its amendment and just keep the language as is, because even though, um, the existing condition may not be ideal for people who live in Brittenall, we could potentially be creating a bigger problem for trucks and also, um, you know, a group of people in, in this subdivision with obviously, um, a lot of, a lot of foot traffic, a lot of traffic, traffic. The roadway is not very wide and it's, it's hilly and curvy and just, uh, you know, that's one thing we don't want to do is, is try and resolve one problem but cause three other problems.
And John, if I'm not mistaken, the way it was written, the truck traffic is not coming off Campbell. It's gotta come off Palmagussit.
It has to come off Palmagussit, so just wanted to bring that before the board and, and potentially reconsider. Because again, um, no matter what the board decides, there, there are gonna be people that this is, you know, that are gonna be inconvenienced by construction traffic. It happens with any development, but we, like I said, we just don't want to, um, potentially try and take care of one problem and cause, um, bigger problems.
I'll just add to your thing.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Jake Brake. That's all you need.
Oh, in the community.
In the community, have a truck put on the Jake Brake going down that hill.
Alex Moss, one nineteen, Brittenall. I understand the concern. I have seen, uh, semi-truck flatbeds with, you know, triple axles in the back, uh, get up with, and they said it wasn't a problem. When I told them, I was like, hey, guys, you're not supposed to be coming this way. The guy said, oh, I can go up this way. I just, I feel like we are bending over backwards for the development at the expense of the town and the taxpayer because even today, I saw two or three fully loaded concrete trucks heading down the dirt road in the middle of mud season, and it's, it's just, we constantly have to try and keep up with it because of all the heavy traffic. And there's, you know, a hundred cars coming from the development. I feel like that the heavy truck track, truck, truck traffic just kills the road. I'm not saying going through the development is the ideal solution. But I, I think it should be noted that during the mud season on a dirt road is just not a good idea either.
Is there, let me say, yes.
My thoughts on this, uh, in the mud season, it's the same every year anyway. There's always buses, there's always trash trucks, and lots of trash trucks these days. Three or four different companies every week. It's, it's a lot easier to fix that gravel road back up than it is, and cheaper to fix the gravel road back up than it is to replace asphalt in those developments. Personally, I think we'd be better off to just let that stuff, let that traffic on that gravel road. So there's another couple of weeks gonna be hard and solid and it'll be all right. And it's easy to go graded again, but once the asphalt breaks up.
Yeah.
It's too late. It's a town road, it's a public access, it's a public road. I don't see how we can keep people from going, driving down it anyway, to be honest with you.
Yeah, because the state has pretty much made it, um, over the years, almost impossible to restrict trucks from most roads, unfortunately. It's, it's very difficult to put a truck restriction on, on any type of road, so. And again, yeah, Alex, yeah, I hear you, it's like.
I've seen plenty of roads with, with truck weight limits on them. And I, I guess, you know, if you do have to throw the truck traffic down there, I, I'd hope there's a better way to police them as far as you start heading, they, you can hear them on the Jake Brake, and then they start hitting the gas as they're coming around the corner onto Brittenall, and they fly to try and get some momentum coming up the hill. And they have a hard right turn and a dive down over the crest of that hill, and people are coming the other way. They have to dart in towards the garage there that's across from the farmhouse. It's like, I, I get it, you're trying to conserve fuel, you need to make your time, I, I understand all of those things. But it's also a quiet community, it's a narrow, as you said, well, you were talking about the other development. It's a narrow dirt road, obviously it's a public way, but I think something needs to be done to temper, uh, the safety hazard that happens with, with those huge trucks going up and down there.
Is there, Chris, is there any thought process for the, and I'm just throwing this out there, for like the construction vehicles, the big ones with the, you know, the rear end using Brittenell off of Palmagussit? But when it comes to building, when you're just bringing in trucks with, you know, like lumber on and stuff like that, using Grizzly? Any thoughts to that?
Well, I would.
I'm just, I'm trying to.
A truck driver delivering, I guess he could go whenever he wants.
That's true, you got a good point.
Just powder, powder Grizzly is not a public way.
That's true.
But from the bridge out, from the pump station out is, but so is, um.
Brittenell, yeah.
So is Brittenell.
And I'm not trying to throw it down the other end so that my neighbors have to deal with it, like, that's not the idea. I want to try and lessen that safety hazard of trucks flying back and forth, uh, when you have other cars coming the other way. It's a lot of weight, a lot of momentum, doesn't stop quick, doesn't start quick, doesn't move quick.
Well, they shouldn't, based on Norm's through you, the, if I remember the conditions, Campbell is off limits for this construction.
Yeah, it is.
So if they do.
But not for Brittenell Estates.
Correct.
No, you, you're correct, but I'm saying for Hilltop.
Just for Hilltop Estates, that's the special condition.
Yeah.
All of that's everything that's going on down there.
They can go either way.
Yeah.
It's actually the widest end of the road, it's actually the best road to pass a truck on.
Yeah.
And they don't have to deal with the main street onto, what is that, fifty-six, that's a tight corner. Like, it, it makes sense, I'm not, I'm not trying to say not in my backyard, I'm just trying to. I, I've been very nice in the past and slow down, please, please, please. And I make sure I say please and, and they just continue to bomb up and down there.
So let, let me ask, it sounds like, would it actually be preferable to have the trucks come off Campbell rather than, rather than Palmagussit? For Hilltop Estates?
We were trying, the reason that, this is before, this is before you, Chris, Joe was looking at, um, Campbell Street being not as truck friendly as Palmagussit is. So it made more sense to bring the heavy traffic up.
Well, that part of Campbell Street is okay, that section of Glenwood isn't great either, just curves and I don't care where you're going down, none of it is exactly.
You need eighteen million dollars to fix the problem.
None of it is exactly big truck friendly, it's all.
Yeah. I just.
I don't know why Joe was pushing for that, I have no idea, but.
Yeah, he was looking, because Palmagussit was, there is truck traffic, you do get semis on Palmagussit. So, um, you typically don't have semi trucks on Campbell Street and, um. So that was more of his pushing, and the other thing was. Like Alex was saying, you gotta go up that hill to get to Hilltop Estates.
Kind of slows them down if they come the other way.
Yeah, if they're coming the other way.
It's a bigger hill.
Yeah.
And they actually have to go slow because then the road is narrower, but.
Yeah.
I mean legitimately, that road is twenty-five miles an hour. That was twenty-five.
Twenty. Speed limit side and, uh, on the Palmagussit.
Oh, it does.
Our associate members directed Butterworth's project.
What's it start getting now? The heavy trucks are gonna pack it down. More than anything else, it'll be packed down. I think it's just a question of when does Blair start the work on this thing? You can hold it off a little bit and wait for it to dry, and then.
So we're driving it every day, it's not bad. It's pretty, that end is pretty dry anyway. It's just narrow. My Norm's house is the worst spot, that one spot, it's a narrower spot.
Chris, did you throw down the gravel and all that stuff that, because I drove it today when I was.
They put stone in the disc because it was too wet.
Yeah, 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 okay.
When the frost is coming out of the ground, it's not a good time to add gravel, so we had them put stone in to bind up the mud.
Yep.
Before I grade it, I'm gonna get ahold of Mr. Blair and make sure that he brings in the material he's supposed to so that we can mix that in with the stone on the hill and roll.
That's probably another couple of weeks out until we get to April. Do you know what's happening with that catch base in there?
So, so hold on, let, let me, let's continue this discussion on the truck routes, I'd like to get that resolved. So, um, there are different options the board has. One is to leave the special condition as it is, to have truck traffic come off Palmagussit only. We have the option that we discussed at the last meeting about sending them, um, through the, through the subdivision. There's also the option of making the trucks come off Campbell, and there's the option of just removing the special condition and the trucks can come in the, the best route they, they, they see fit. So those are the, the four different options, I just want to try and get to what, what's the board thinking in conjunction with Chris? As far as, again, with something like this, we're just trying to come up with the, the least impactful option, you know? And that's not, that's obviously on, on residents and people, but it's also on roadways, like Chris explained, as far as the cost and things like that, and, you know, repairing, so, um, I just.
I think this, this is my opinion for the board, the shorter and more direct for me is Palmagussit.
You know, obviously I'm not nuts about additional truck traffic coming down Brittenall Drive from my personal point of view. But when, when I take a look at this, going through the, the subdivisions, Highlands and that, just, just count up the number of houses that they're going by, and as far as I'm concerned, probably three quarters of those houses have kids. Okay?
I don't want semis coming through that addition.
Kids, kids start, you know, coming out and playing.
Well, they're gonna be playing.
And all of that sort of thing, just from a safety standpoint. Overwhelmingly.
Okay, so we don't want them by our house either, so hopefully, if it makes sense for them to go down one end or the other, is there some way that we can send a message for them to keep it slow? That, because otherwise they're gonna keep hearing from everybody.
It's twenty-five on roads, we can't, we can't shut it down past that or extend it past that. And it kinda is what it is, it's a dirt road, it has its own speed limit, the town enforces that, the police department does.
Right.
So we, we're not gonna get into that.
No, we can't, and so that would be the thing, if, if, I'm sorry, Norm. If people, if people know, if people, if people notice that trucks are going above the speed limit, contact the police department, that would be, that would be the solution.
To be perfectly honest with you, and obviously I'm home a lot, I see the trucks going up and down Brittenall Drive, and I don't see them speeding. Now, they're loud, hey, big trucks, they'll be loud. They can't help that, but, but as far as speeding, no, I, I don't, I don't see that.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to just give Cle, hey, can you make sure that you guys understand that it's a twenty mile an hour speed limit? That doesn't hurt, just to send it.
No, we couldn't.
I think that's, that's.
I think the roadway too is not gonna confuse them with speeding. They're not gonna haul like that.
And the road is so, this road is so crested too, it's got ruts, it's got grooves in it.
It's a dirt road.
Yeah.
It is what it is.
But for what it's worth, over at that end that you're on, the other side of where Grizzly Drive, well, Bear Farm Road is, that, that's a lot narrower, and the trucks go much slower. When they come off of Campbell, there's a big wide open spot, some asphalt, and they hit that thing running. My office is right at that, that window, I have videos of it on game cameras, uh, because everyone's real up in arms. And I'm, I'm just saying, for long-term feasibility, uh, you're gonna continue to catch a lot of flack if, if that still happens, if there's nothing that we can do about it.
But again, the planning board doesn't enforce speed limits. So we, we do, the board does the best.
Trucking limits.
Right, the board does, the, the, all the board can do is impose reasonable conditions on a subdivision or development to try and mitigate impacts, and that's, that's basically the best.
How about asking for a speed limit sign at the.
That's public safety, that is not us.
So that would be TPW?
They, they tried that a few years back.
You mean tried?
They, they put up a speed limit sign.
Yeah.
And, and I'm not sure, I, I, again, I don't know the laws.
It's not us, that's what matters most, it's not us, so.
DPW, I believe, that did put it up.
Probably did.
And they made them take it down for some reason or other.
Who's, who's. Didn't look scenic, who's we?
Town, see, the town does not put the speed limits on roads, the state does that. We can't just.
No, 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 that, I, I, but, hold on, I don't, I don't believe that's true on town roads, that's true on state roads. The town could put up speed limit signs on their own roads.
I'll sneak you, you need a speed, you'd need a, a whole speed study to change the speed limit or add a speed limit to a road that's not.
Chris, the last town meeting, I can't be wrong, and you might, Mickey, you might be able to help me out, but I think the town voted to reduce on certain roads from twenty-five to twenty.
I think it failed.
It failed, okay then.
Yeah.
I'll shut up and go away.
All I can tell you is that the speed limit sign on Palmagussit and Brittenall, that corner there, says twenty miles an hour, so.
So yes, so, so, okay, so.
I think for Hilltop, John.
Yeah.
We should leave, this is my opinion, we should leave the conditions of coming off Palmagussit the way they are, the way the original ones are. For, for Bryce Lemon, uh, Bryce Lemon, sorry, Brittenell Estates, sorry, wrong subdivision, I don't know that we can do anything other than just give Nick a heads up that, you know, there's been some complaints.
Well, I was just gonna say, why don't I send him an email coming out of this meeting, letting him know we had this conversation, that this is the special condition, now that we're getting into construction season, could the police have a presence out there to just monitor the truck traffic during the day, during the week, and, and just keep an eye on it?
I think that's the best of all worlds, but I think we should pull the, and I think it's gonna take a vote because I think we voted last time.
Yeah.
To change it, I, I'd make a motion to.
Rescind the amendment.
Rescind the, the Grizzly condition that we modified, um, Hilltop to and put it back to the original of all construction traffic has to come off of Palmagussit onto Brittenell. It's a motion.
You wouldn't move it all together, huh?
No, I, I think Palmagussit's the better choice because it's, to me, it's built for truck traffic to begin with. I, I know this isn't a good thing because we just put a new road there, but, or, or, you know.
I know what you're talking about.
But, um, I would rather see truck traffic, again, I've driven Glenwood so much that I don't like that weaving and up and down hills with truck traffic.
The place with a line of sight is not really very nice.
With Palmagussit, I know there's curves, but it's, it was built to state standards is what I'm getting at.
What's going on with that intersection of Glenwood and Campbell? Because that's really a dangerous spot where they come down Glenwood and then bear left onto Campbell where Glenwood's coming around that corner on that L-bag development. And those cars don't stop, but those trucks have to take a left through that. And there's something going on with that intersection, and I'm wondering if there's a way to make that left turn safer if they do end up, or if you're sending Palmagussit, that's one thing, but that's, that's a nightmare, that's an accident waiting to happen.
There's two stops.
I know what's going on with that. We took the island out and we're gonna reroute it to a three-way stop. It's coming pretty soon, we just haven't, it's winter time.
So all roads, um.
Three-way stop sign.
There's two there now, but now you're gonna do.
Tear it off so that you have to come to a stop and make a right or a left.
So there's two now, we're gonna add a third one, which will be the one coming as you're going onto Campbell Street. Okay, cool.
Well, right now, on Glenwood, you don't have to stop.
No.
On either way, but you're gonna have to stop both ways.
What if you're coming?
It's a three-way stop.
Okay, I'm good. I know there's one because I always have to stop there, one at Brittenell, and then the second one before I get on to.
If you're coming out of Campbell, you're supposed to stop both directions.
Correct.
But you not have to stop on Glenwood at all.
It's a straight.
And if you're coming down Glenwood and you wanna go take a left onto Campbell, you gotta say, okay, ready, one, two, three, go.
Yeah.
Because they're coming around the other corner.
And there's no stop sign there.
There's no stop, but there will be.
There will be, okay, I'm good with that.
All right, so.
I don't think anyone did anything.
Motion the second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The only thing I would do is, is since we changed it and now we've unchanged it, is give, uh, Blair Development a heads up.
Yep.
Yeah.
That they know.
Yep.
That'd be.
I will CC Cle on the email to the police chief.
Oh, definitely, yeah, thanks, John.
Particularly where a lot of, some of these construction people have gotten used to going through the subdivisions.
Yes. That's not gonna happen.
They need to be told that, no.
So when he starts taking out dirt and stuff like that, it's gotta come in and out on Palmagussit?
Okay.
Oh, we get a vote on that, don't we?
We did.
Oh, you did, bad.
Damn it, sorry.
I thought I heard you say aye.
I did.
No discussion needed.
Okay, next item, road acceptance policy.
I've, I've had this in your packet a few times, it has not been decided on. I, I was hoping to have this approved by now, but tonight, I, I'd like the planning board to vote to endorse this. It's been through town council, Chris has reviewed it, Quinn has reviewed it, it's been through the reviews. I also included a memo where I did research on, you know, a dozen different towns as far as what timeline they require. So the timeline that I'm proposing, most of it is boilerplate language, that in other towns, the big, the big factor is, and I've consulted with Norm on this, as far as, um, as far as just, um, you know, giving, so. I'm sorry, Norm, you wanted to change approximately to at least.
Yeah.
At least, I'm sorry. So at least four months, at least ninety days, so change that to at least instead of approximately for the timelines, so it's more precise. So anyway, um, I proposed four months to get the process going because I know that this is the first time the town's gonna have a road acceptance policy, so developers aren't used to it. It's gonna take some getting used to, so I didn't wanna go, I didn't wanna go too strict. Uh, as you can see, some town, a lot of towns, it's six months, sometimes seven months, ten months, depending on the town. Now, Bourne is down on the Cape, so the Cape is its own, its own thing, but I figured four months was fair. You know, to start the process.
To submit paperwork.
To start, to begin the process, to get title certification, uh, to the south, submit information to the select board to start the road acceptance process.
Well, it also gives Quinn four months to check everything, get reports back to us.
It gives Quinn a chance to review things, town council has to review their documentation as far as meets and bounds descriptions of what's being accepted by the town, they need to review that and comment on it to make sure that's legally accurate. Quinn has to, so they have to, so the town council is to view the layout plans and the meets and bounds description to make sure the town's accepting what it's supposed to be, what's supposed to be accepting. And then Quinn has to review the as, the, uh, the, basically the roadway plans and, um, the as-built plans in comparison to the description, the approval, to make sure that they built it the way they were supposed to build it. And if there were any waivers, review it for the waivers, then so on.
And for a spring town meeting, just for the board's perspective, that gives almost six weeks before the Warren article opens up. So that's time to get any problems, hopefully identified and solved.
They, they'd start after the new year, January where they would have to start this process.
Just opened up last meeting, which was middle of March or early March, and it goes to April tenth, so, yeah. I think that's plenty, I think four months is, is fair.
Well, a couple of questions here. Number one, do we adopt this policy or does the select board adopt it?
The select, it's the select board's policy, but I want to get planning board endorsement of it before it goes to the select board. That's why I want to go through everybody. Again, it's going through Chris, Quinn, and town council, this is the last stop before I present it to the select board.
I think we should make a recommendation to forward this policy to the select board for approval.
And I'm just, I'm just thinking one, one more thing I'll get to you on.
Yeah.
Is, uh, we know for certain that Cle is looking for two acceptances, which he tried for last fall.
Yeah.
And if this goes into effect.
Can't do it.
Soon enough, he isn't even gonna be able to get them this year.
Well, and here's, we haven't actually received it.
No.
We just got an email that said he wanted to.
Right.
But he will.
Right.
It's gonna be smoked.
It's fine, that's fine. It's that, you know, the town can't hold off on doing stuff just because we think a developer is gonna do that, yeah.
And on top of that, the select board's not even gonna look at this until thirty, next Monday, because that's their next meeting.
Correct, the thirty-first.
Yeah, so they won't even.
And I have to get this on their agenda, so I don't even know if it's gonna be on for the next agenda, so.
I can pull some strings.
Okay.
Do you know, Peter, you got, you got two days, so. I, I, I like this, I read through it, I think it's comprehensive. I, I don't, I don't think it's too restrictive. And based on what I looked at on West Boylston, I, I'm thinking we're good. I mean, this is, this is a good, we need to get this in place because there's been too many times where, uh, one month before, I wanna put a thing on, and I.
And a lot of this is attachments, the actual policy is only like three and a half pages. It looks, it looks more, um, complicated than it is.
Most of this is for the lawyer to fill out, adzements and stuff like that.
But I figured it was good to have the legal forms attached to this.
John, you did a great job of putting this together, I think phenomenal. This is, this is why we pay you the big bucks.
I will say, on those, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead, you were first.
H two. You have, uh, a double A, go to the second A, and just below that it says selectmen, I say change it to select board.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
And just below it, you had private ways and private ways, plural. But one of the things is, is there any way to put private way to, into a public way?
Oh, so the sentence says, their intention to lay out the proposed roads as a public way or public ways. So you would ask me this in the office, Dick, but private roads are a whole different thing. I mean, if we have an existing road, this is for new roads.
This is new roads only, but I'm just thinking that a private road turned into a public one.
Right.
We have so many private ones in town here that should be, should be that way, it would be new. I'm just saying.
But again, it doesn't change the process, they're still trying to turn something into a public way, whether it's newly constructed, that's universal language.
But, but to John's point, they, if, if it was a private way and they wanna turn it into a public way, they'd have to go through this procedure, even if it was private, so. and they wanna turn it into a public way, they'd have to go through this procedure, even if it was private, so that's the reason why I like this.
But that's why I'm, why it doesn't, it should say, you know, turning from a private into a public. It should have the verbiage in there.
I I don't wanna get too caught, because this includes everything, Dick, no matter what it is. Again, it could be a newly constructed road or an existing road that they like accepted. The same process has to be followed. They still have to give us a layout plan and as-built plan, and the layout plan shows not only the pavement, but also anything else the town is accepting, the entire right away. It could be sidewalks, it could be lights, it could be street trees, it could be curving, drainage.
I don't think we're giving them a loophole, because we've said private way.
This is generic. This is generic.
Yeah.
Um and the, down at the bottom of that paragraph, it says town engineer, but to me, it should be, it's.
Where's that, Dick?
A B at the la- the last sentence, the last two words.
Yeah.
Says town engineer, we need to fix that because we don't have a town engineer.
Well, that, that would be, all right, it would be the planning board engineer.
Thank you. That, that to me is what I wanted to hear. And um. Good, good catch. Oh. Dang it, I hate this. Um no, I thought there was, there was one other thing, but, oh, I know. The reason why I brought it up, because I had brought it up to the select board a long freaking time ago. Mister Blair put a public sewer down a private way. And I asked for uh did they ever get the, the okay from the private people on that road to put that line in? Because it's not a town road.
They had to get a grant of easement through.
And have you ever heard of that?
What are you talking about that?
Fairview Ave. Blair puts a sewer line from.
I don't know.
Down there.
I don't know if I've been given anybody permission.
Yeah, I I know, it was that long ago.
But the town owns that sewer line now.
Yes, they do.
So yeah, you're saying like a, a town.
I'm assuming somebody okayed it. I, I don't know, it wasn't me, but it's.
Well, we don't know that.
We don't know that.
Yeah, I've accepted that and the town owns that press line now.
So does that mean that the people that live on there who own that road and that line falls through, that they have the right to charge the town for the right of that line going through?
Well, yeah, if you had to. Can we stay on this?
It's a good question, though.
It is a good question, just.
Well, it goes back to this acquisition by grant for the easements. This has all gotta be done as part of the roadway.
Yes.
And I can, I agree with you. In the past, it hasn't been maybe followed as uh
Yes.
correctly as it should be.
Right.
But this, I think this document is gonna fix for Chris all the messes that have happened in the past by having this policy in place.
Well, it's not gonna fix messes of the past, it'll make sure that things are done better going forward.
Going forward, we're gonna have.
Yeah.
We won't have the issues, so. And I like this recording that you got in here about uh all the grant of easements have to be recorded, so there'll be documentation of it, so with the rest of your deeds.
That is a good idea.
I I I mean, I'll make a motion to, with the corrections that we put in here already, to forward this to.
We just have one quick thing.
Okay.
On C, can you do a physical copy and digital copy of that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So where's that? The as-built plans on page two?
Please and thank you.
Okay, so you told me that before, so.
All I got.
All right, hold on. A copy.
So, physical copy and digital copy.
Excellent.
That's it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Just got one silly legal, it's probably, you should say stupid and silly, uh silly, um.
That's gonna be reflected in the minutes.
Yeah, it will, yeah.
I agree with Sully.
Just because it says, for example, I put it in, I've, I submitted my paperwork four months out. Does the third paragraph down just say, if you don't accept it, that doesn't mean because you submitted it? You know, it 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 makes its way through the, you know, does it, does there have to be language in there that says at any point, you know, you could be held up by this process by not meeting it?
Well, I mean, it it doesn't guarantee anything. I mean, a snag could be run into. For instance, we could, we could run into something where Quinn, the, the town and the board needs a clean letter from Quinn before they accept it.
Yeah.
So if there's.
That's what I'm curious about.
We've got in the situations, Dick and and Norm remember this, where we got a report back from Quinn with ninety-nine problems.
Yeah.
And we were like, oh, that road's not getting accepted until this is all fixed.
So this is all contingent upon that, and that's why this process is laid out to have it reviewed by everyone who needs to be reviewed.
So in the four months, i- if those ninety-nine conditions don't get done, then.
Then they don't.
Nope.
It can be put on the warrant, but then it's gonna be no action.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even put it on the warrant, because I don't like that, because it could actually, someone could vote to approve it, and we still have twenty-seven punch list items, so.
Yeah.
I prefer, I would prefer not even to do that.
I agree, but in the past, sometimes we've had warrant articles that have been left open, so I'm just saying that I would, from the board's perspective, not be.
Should we have like a closed loop at the end of this? And I I think to Keith's point is where failure to, failure to meet any and all of the above conditions and approval of X, Y, Z will constitute delays and approvals?
I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit hesitant to put something in there that, that, that's specific, because what if we miss something? I see what you're saying. I just.
I'm thinking of like a backstop where it's like, well, you, I, you know, there's no, there's no requirement that says I have to do X, Y, Z. I mean, i- it is. Well, if town council went through, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hold this thing up. I just, I'm saying maybe a backstop. I'm, I'm good with it as is. I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to rock the boat.
I'm just worried about.
I think that, or Keith, I'm sorry, of Britton, I think the backstop is, is if the select board chooses not to lay the ways out. That's the backstop. They're done.
And they, but they retain that right in here, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, town council has said, the town doesn't have to accept any roadway. For whatever reason, they don't have to. We went, yeah, we went through that with the um.
I just wanna make sure if we're.
With the Emerald and Welch, yeah.
Mister and Miss, or whatever the company is, you follow this and somebody says, oh, well, I followed all this and I didn't get an approval.
We, but again, you know, that's why we have the research views. If if something comes up, like I said, you know, we have a letter from, from Quinn Engineering that has punch list items. This is not complete, you know, this, this is not, this is not a complete submission.
I mean, if town councils go, like I said, I won't hold this up. I think we need to get this in place.
Yeah, no, town, town council has.
Just thinking about that, that's all. I agree with Keith.
I get what, I get what you're saying. It's just, I'm just afraid, again, of getting too specific and creating an unintended loophole, so.
I I still think th- this is good to get the road acceptance po- road acceptance started. There's lots of checks and balances in here of the, there's issues with the plans. Quinn can say something.
Oh, I'm sorry, the, 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 I'll put, the planning boards, so for instance, on page two, down on the second portion, um it's two B.
Yeah.
The planning, the planning board's engineer.
So prepare.
And or DPW director may inspect the road or roads and easement areas to determine if the road or roads have been properly constructed and all subdivision improvements have been properly installed. The, the, it's implied that if it's not, then that, that's a deal breaker. So there are different things in here along the way, I think, that says inspections are done, and I think it's implied that if that inspection doesn't come back favorably, then that, that could hold up the process.
That's what happened that time.
Yeah, that's, yeah, and they weren't happy about it, but again, it, we, we were fair and said, listen, you got ninety-nine problems, you gotta fix these.
So it says, the letter may contain a list of any outstanding items or issues related to the roads and easement areas. The applicant shall be responsible for completing any remaining items and for correcting any issues at its sole expense. So I, I think it lists out things pretty well without getting overly specific.
Well, I, I, the reason I, I like that B, John, is because we've got two eyes on it. We got Quinn's and Chris's eyes on it, so between the two of them, they'll come up with what's best for the town.
So it says, once all items are complete to the satisfaction of the, I'm gonna have to change this, planning board engineer, I'll change it throughout the document, and the DPW director, the applicant shall provide a roadway as-built for review and approval by the planning board engineer. So again, they have to do that. There, it, there are steps in here where you can't proceed to the next step until you complete that step.
We're, we're making them follow procedure, which they haven't in the past, which I really like. And again, they could get through this and the select board decides not to lay it out. That's out of our control, but at least they, we've given them a, a procedure to follow it.
We set the roadmap, I mean.
Yes.
Uh, no pun intended.
Well, there you go. Yes, that's correct. Nice work.
It's also helpful for staff, too, because when you don't do it very often, sometimes you forget the steps in between. And then if there's turnover in staff, at least there's no loopholes, like it's not ambiguous.
Right, yeah, there's, yeah. And the thing is, we may come up with stuff over time that we need to.
You can always add to policies.
We could tweak it, you know, and um it's, to, to Tamika's point, it's gonna take time for staff to get used to this, you know, because this is the first policy the town's had. So, yeah, it's gonna be a, a learning curve for everybody.
I can make the motion.
Yeah, I'll go back with my motion, and again, since I sort of said all changes.
Do we need comment from the public?
No, because as a policy.
It's not public, yeah, right, yeah, okay. It's basically a record.
It's on the eyes of the cross.
Yeah.
That's right.
That when the select board has this on their agenda, the public will have a chance to come to that, too.
Yeah.
Tim, do you wanna include a favorable recommendation in your motion so that the board knows you support it?
I wanna, yes, basically, and I apologize if you put that in, a favorable recommendation from the planning board to the select board to I wanted to use activate this policy, but that's probably not figured out.
Adopt.
Adopt, yes, thank you. That's, that's my spiel, and that's what I'm sticking. I'll second that one.
Sorry, I don't wanna hold this up, but I'm looking for. If you go down to the third page, F A. It says the town must acquire the necessary easements. It doesn't say who has to provide that document. At least I haven't seen it. Because those, those documents would be prepared by the applicant.
Right.
And submitted by the applicant.
Correct.
It doesn't say anywhere in here that the applicant has to provide it. It just says the town must acquire.
Because they prepare these things before the proc- at the beginning of the process.
It must be granted.
The necessary easement.
But over on the grant of easements, the, the second paragraph says, it says, you know, the grant or, but it says convey and grant to the town of Rutland, so that, that document is basically saying they're giving all of these easements to the town, so that's, I think, Norm, that's why maybe it's not as specific in that.
But I, I agree, it's a good point, because you, you don't, you wanna be very consistent in these things. The town must be granted.
Okay, you wanna change that to be granted?
Yeah, it's not an acquire. We're not gonna go out and acquire easements, so we must be granted these easements.
Okay.
That would be consistent with what was said earlier in the document.
And what's in the easement granting document, too.
Correct.
Awesome.
Good, good catch.
So I'll continue with changes and leave that.
You're on your game.
He's shooting from half court right now.
You must have been hanging out with that Kerizzi guy this week.
Yeah, right.
All right, it's cool.
Thank you. So did I ever get.
Second day, we just have to go.
Any further discussion? There was a motion again.
To, to send to the select board a favorable recommendation.
Yes.
With noted changes for adoption of a new town policy for road acceptance.
Once again, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And John, thanks. This is excellent. Again, that's the second time you've earned to keep this reading.
Make a note of that, Toss.
Dial it back. Don't, don't overextend. Dial it back. No, 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 no. Nick Morse wants everybody to know what kind of justification we do that he does for us. For the town.
Next item, site plan review application.
This has been discussed previously, and I'm not sure if the board is supportive of this, but I thought I'd bring, I was asked to do research, and I've had this done for a while, but the agendas have been pretty full up to this point, so I've kinda sat on it for a little while because it's not urgent, but I figured this meeting would be a good one to bring forward on the results of a study I did in terms of potentially adding um an application fee for site plan review because we currently do not have one. I know Britton had not, um, you know, had not expressed a lot of, you know, support for adding a site plan review fee, so, but I wanted, but the board had asked me to do my research, so this is a board decision. Um we, you know, we have a special permit application fee. We, we have site plan review, but we don't have a fee associated with it. So I think um my recommendation, if the board wanted to um implement an application fee, would be in between two hundred fifty and three hundred dollars, because site plan reviews do need a public hearing. Um so, and normally, our application fee does include the, the legal advertisement, so that's usually about, I think it's, I think it's usually around in, in, you know, in the low one hundreds, like one twenty, one twenty-five, one thirty for the legal ads for something like this, depending on the length of the ad. Um so that would, that would cover the legal advertisement and a little bit to go on the revolving fund, so I, I throw it to the board to discuss and, and make a deci- decision.
Um I would personally recommend a, not only a fee, but as, you know, as high as you think possible, because the, the town is currently uh one point nine million dollars in debt. And, and development is part of that issue when you take into account the taxes that are paid on each house, so every approved building, you're signing on to a debt for the town. It's not a value add unless it's more of a senior collection of fifty-five plus, but I think this could help to offset some funding from somewhere. Start to try and grab something. I mean, there, you need to start at some point to try and turn this, this town into a somewhat solvent uh operation, and this would be a drop in the bucket, but you gotta start turning on the faucet at some point.
How's that gonna be? And I, I agree with what Alex is saying, I'm just, part of our site plan review is also for businesses and stuff like that, so I gotta throw that out there.
Well, right now, the, the site plan review responsibly that the planning board has, and I'm, I don't have the bylaws in front of me, so I don't know all of them, but I know we do site plan review for minor home occupations.
Yeah.
We do site plan review for signs in non-residential zoning districts. So those are the two main ones that have come forward since I've been here. Um other than that, the, the plan, oh, site plan review for um House Country Store. There wasn't an application fee for that because we don't have one. So there are site plan, so certain uses are allowed by site plan approval within certain zoning districts like the Village Center District, so those are the type of things that, because unlike some other towns, in the, in the other towns I've worked in, site plan review is basically based on the scope of the project. In other words, it's usually any multifamily or non-residential development that reaches certain thresholds, like X amount of square foot of building expansion or new building, things like that, or, or adding, or adding X amount of parking spaces to a parking lot or something like that. I mean, in the town of Rainham, it was even as specific as say you had a commercial development that was changing their main entrance, that was, that had to be approved through, through site plan review. Um so different towns have different thresholds, but we don't have that here. This is one of the few towns I've wor- I've, I've seen where site plan review is, is based on use. It's usually based on the scope of the project, so that being the case, you know, the site plan review here isn't quite as common as it is in, in, in other, other communities, and the type of development we get for site plan review isn't to the same scale as in some other communities where they have in more industrial development and more commercial development, where you know, like for instance, in um, when I was in Stoughton, we had a large Campanelli Industrial Park where Globe Enterprises that produces submarine parts for the Navy was doing an eighty thousand square foot addition onto their factory. That's, that's a big project.
Just for a thousand dollars, because you can pull that out of petty cash and hand you cash.
So the site plan review fee there is based, is based on the scope of the work, and it's commensurate, it's, it's equal to the scope of the work, so it's a sliding scale as far as it's X amount of dollars per five thousand square feet or ten thousand square feet or whatever it is in that case, but Rutland is not Stoughton. Stoughton is a large community with thirty thousand people, but you know, this is, this, this is something just to.
Norm, I was gonna suggest, I, I like John's summary at the bottom, but what, when I read this, I mean, what jumped out at me was Townsend. I, I would put two fifty for structures less than three thousand, because that's gonna cover most houses in Rutland that wanna do the occupational permit. I mean, maybe we do have some more than three thousand square feet, but that two fifty would take care of the single businesses and smaller uh structures for like single, you know, like houses in three thousand square feet.
No, I, I don't think this would apply to single-family homes. I think single-family homes would be exempt from site plan review.
They still need site plan review for occupation, for.
Minor home occupation.
For major home occupation, correct?
Right, that's a special permit, though.
Oh, you're right, so it's the minor.
So that would be, that would be the five hundred dollar special permit, and this would be site plan review for a minor home occupation.
Well, my thought process was off then, but I, what I was liking Townsend because that sliding structure, if we do get larger um businesses or warehouses in town.
Yeah.
We could have the two fifty, five. We could have the two fifty, five hundred and fifteen hundred. I I like that number. That's, I I. I mean, if we're gonna get smaller businesses that are small.
I think we'd have to be specific with that, though, Tim. We would have to specify that, say, it's two hundred fifty, like you said, to use Townsend's example. If you wanted to do two hundred fifty dollars for a structure of less than three thousand square feet. It would have to be specified that it's a multifamily or commercial or industrial building. Because it couldn't apply to single families duplexes, I don't think by law.
Okay. I just, I like that because I just, to me, i- if someone wanted to come in and do a, let's just say a warehouse of ten thousand square feet. We're gonna charge him two hundred fifty bucks? That seems a little. Cheap.
Yeah. Major business.
Yeah, so.
Well, right now, that's better than nothing.
Yeah, I just, I I prefer to get a little bit more out of a a business.
I just going a little different direction. Common driveways are by site plan review, right, for two?
Yes.
Yeah.
So if you go according to structure.
Yeah, so that you, and this is why, Tim, I think in Townsend, they probably have site plan review that's based on the scope of the project and not on the use.
How do we do, then, I guess I'm asking the board, how do we do a sliding scale? Cuz I think that's.
It's tricky when you don't have it based on the scope.
Yeah, I know. I I just, I don't wanna just put a number out there of two fifty, and then again, I don't wanna put fifteen hundred bucks cuz. That, that's, that's.
So, so to what John had opened up with, that was sort of where I was coming from, you know, with. ADUs or, not, not ADUs, but. Small businesses, things like that. I wasn't looking, we don't wanna rake them over the coals.
Yeah.
But it's not fair that it should be the same amount for a seventy-five thousand square foot Walmart.
Right?
Like, and not that that's gonna happen, I'm just saying as an example, like, that's where it gets silly i- in my opinion, but.
So, but in the, in the case of that, Norm, a common driveway, you're not, you're not approving the structure, you're, you're approving the driveway, and a driveway's not a structure. So you can have a, you can have that.
Flat rate.
You can have a flat rate for that one. If you want me to work on something to kind of give it more nuance, I can do that based on this feedback.
Having John do is come up with, if you wanna call it a table. Of 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 site plan fees. And then present it to the board, and and maybe we have some, I mean, I don't know.
So what we could do is we could have, say, say we could start at two hundred fifty dollars for any site plan review. That is non-structural, right?
It's good.
Then we could do something based on something of use that involves a structure.
Correct.
So that we could do it like that if you wanted to.
I I think that's fair, cuz we're setting the floor of the minimum, and then anything moving forward. You know, like somebody, somebody wants, a- a- and we all know we're not getting a a huge structure, but we could get a ten thousand square foot warehouse in here easily.
And so if the Rutland Heights ever, you know, something ever happens at Rutland Heights, for instance.
Yeah, we'd have to send this to RDIC because they have a different. They're exempt from uh.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But again, John, I'm sorry, I'm, 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 I was just gonna say, getting something in place is the key these days. That's what we need to do is get something in place.
From there, I agree.
Yeah, so.
I got a small comment if no one else does. Um, I mean, it would be tough to see. The minor home, I I agree with Britain, the minor home occupation, like um the woman who came in with the. Application for dog grooming, you know, and just get, just say, oh, you know, you gotta, you gotta, you know, you gotta bring your two hundred fifty bucks out. You know, it's kind of, it does hurt, hurt people, I guess. So I guess I'm saying maybe a waiver or an abatement possibility where you can just say, hey. You know, I I don't feel like I fit that.
Well, but the thing is, I'd say, nah, nah, but again, you don't wanna start waiving fees all over the place here. I'd rather come up with reasonable fees. That we don't waive. So that's why I wanna work on a s- a scale with some nuance, like.
Do that.
And basically, basically, um, in other words, say two hundred fifty dollars for any site plan review that. Um, involves a non-structural, a approval of something non-structural. Or something less than, say, a thousand square feet of additional whatever. And then five hundred dollars for anything, blah, 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 that is structural and includes.
Something we can tie tangibly to the, to the permit. And then to kind of add on to that, so. ADUs are site plan review, correct?
Yeah, they're they're going to, that's what.
They will be. So what is our, what's our thought process? I know we're looking a little bit down the road here.
Yeah.
I wanna muddy the waters too much, but.
We need to think about that.
What do we, what would we say is fair to a fee for that? Cuz that's nine hundred square feet or less. Could be attached, could be detached, depending on the entry and the application. Obviously, that's a structural request either way.
Yep.
No matter which way that goes. There's also an impact on town sewer. Is that part of something, I know we can't require, we have, we're very limited on what we can require. Because of the state law, but is there any sort of sewer impact study that can be done to add that bedroom?
One, I think that's a tough one. I think that's a tough one. But let me work on this because I.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm throwing it out there for conversation. It's, ADUs are gonna be big.
Yep.
Especially in this community.
Yep.
Uh, I think we're gonna see an influx very soon, and I wanna make sure that if that's, we're consistent across the board, we can't single those out.
Right.
For our fees, but we've gotta be.
No, but it may mean we need to bring our, we need to bring our scale down a little bit when it comes to. Our fees in terms of, okay, if we know we're gonna get an influx of these, we don't wanna rake people over the coals, but if we know we're gonna be getting a lot and they involve structures. Maybe instead of saying, you know, what, we'll say two hundred fifty dollars, say for non-structural approvals, or something that doesn't. Expand or is not new construction. Then we do something like. Three hundred fifty dollars for something like that, that's, that's basically. Um, you know, less than a thousand square feet of blah, 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 blah. You know, that, that would be your accessory dwelling units at nine hundred square feet, so.
Maybe, yeah, and that's, I would, I'd be okay with that, but I think, you know, just as a, as a discussion.
Cuz you're right. It involves, it involves more effort and more legwork when it involves structures.
Correct.
Okay. Um, one short comment would be, you know, if if a site plan to add to it, you know, if. If it costs us money to have an engineer look at it, and it costs money for the. The public, you know, obviously the letter uh to the newspaper, not that that one's as as uncommon, but uh. You know, if it becomes a big expensive project, yeah, recouping a little bit of cost.
Well, but they always have to pay. If we need to engage Quinn Engineering, they have to give us money for that. That's automatically, that's in state.
We don't, that doesn't come out of our revolving fund. Okay. The only thing that right now is coming out of our revolving fund is because we don't have any fees for site plan. Anytime we've gotta notify the paper or anything like that. We're paying for that right now, nobody else is. So that's, that's actually coming out of our, out of our coffers, not going into it.
So let me, let me work on that.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're filling the guy up.
Yeah, he's looking at this like, oh my gosh.
Yeah. Those guys.
Okay, next item. Planning for fiscal. Twenty-six budget.
I've spent too much time on this. And this has changed since last Friday, too.
Yeah, there were a bunch of different possibilities that have been, that have been discussed.
The only one I know of that's approved just from the board's perspective is the. Two point or one point nine million dollar override. That's the only thing that's been approved by the select board. Everything else is on the table, no approvals.
Two point one, yeah.
Okay, I couldn't remember, but that's the only one that's been approved. Everything else, so this is.
Just for a correction, and I don't mean to interrupt you. They did also approve um the cut budget, the version of the cut budget that's posted on the town's website.
The one, the one from Friday or the one before that?
The one that was um.
The slash and burn?
Proposed aft, so the slash and burn was not approved.
Okay.
The one that the finance committee discussed last Thursday was the version that's posted on the website that the select board approved on the seventeenth. So from that fin com discussion, there may come changes, but those have not gone back to the select board yet.
So what?
So basically, I think, I believe in that budget Tamika's referring to. It's the same as this budget that is in your packet. As far as, as far as what it means for this department.
Okay, and that's why I wanted to, to the board, put out there that I think we should send a letter. To the select board indicating that. The budget should be re-reviewed. And since, the the last one I saw, again, I'm not the expert here, but from the fiscal twenty twenty-five. Most department heads were not getting any raises unless it was contractual, and I don't know enough about that. Um, but what I could see was the planner was taking a twenty-five or twenty-four point four percent, to be correct. Deduction out of, and being the only department head that was taking a deduction. I'd like to send a letter from the planning board, um, because of what John does for us, and then. My experience working from the RDIC with the EDC is also his use with the. Community development and business development, tell the select board that um I would like to see that budget revisited. And John made whole to his fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget of ninety-one eight. Not, and no deductions and no thought process that the. That the. Uh, I'm having a brain death right now. The revolving fund was gonna be a budgetary function. Of support. That's, that's what I'd like to propose to the planning board, to go back, to send a letter to the select board indicating that. We would like them to go back and figure out a way to make. A- a- all of the directors and and department heads equal, and the planning board is not planning board. Planner, I shouldn't say planning board, the town planner is not. And and this is my words only, penalized twenty-five percent. Singled out, yeah, I guess. I was trying not to go down that path, but that's exactly what it seems like. And I was not cool with that, um, and I think that, I get it. I understand this town's in a whirl of hell, but. I I just don't think that's a. And. Correct way because just tonight, what we've seen that our planner's done, staff's done for us. And what he's done for um the RDIC and the EDC, I I think it's, it's a disservice to him as a planner. That's it.
Real quick, I I think especially his, his pointing out that we can start with fees and things like that to start. Getting some money in here is testament to the, the fact that we, we need him. Uh, to kind of get us out of this situation that we're in from a town organizational perspective.
Yep. The fees only go to the planning board, they don't feed the budget.
No, they go to the revolving fund.
Just to, it's not gonna, I mean, it goes to a private fund that we have.
Yeah, but it it covers, it covers all of our legal fees and stuff like that if we have to use them, so.
Yeah, so it is, money's coming in, I guess.
What I, what I'm trying to stay away from is the planning board supplementing the town budget. That's what I'm not, it's not, we've done in the past. I get it, but I just, I just think that's just, it's like one-time funds. The town doesn't wanna use one-time funds. But here we are using one-time funds to cover the, the, the planner salary.
That's why they're doing it.
Yeah.
They want us to use our money.
Based on what I've seen for the next four years, we'll be using one-time funds for the next four years until we're out of money. And I'm just not gonna set precedent. That's me. I'm not talking for the whole board, this is me. I don't feel that we should be setting precedent for that, so. Uh, that's the reason I'm recommending a letter to the select board. I mean, we don't have control of the budget. All we can do is recommend and and give comments, so that's, that's what I'd like the, the board to do. I had made a motion, I just wanted to put it out there to talk. Before we do anything.
Um, and and we did use money already when John got hired, I believe, right?
No, no, we did not.
Was there a discussion of it, um, in some way? Cuz there was a, oh, it's if the override failed, that's what it was.
I think, yeah, there was a discussion there. There was a discussion when David George was here.
Yeah. E- every year we had it, Norm. It's like, alright, Dave, we're gonna make you whole come hell or high water.
Keith, I think that was actually when they were going through the hiring process, and Austin was looking to see if the board was willing. To supplement from the revolving to pay a wage that was in line with the market, if I remember correctly.
That's what it was, then.
But the override passed, and there was monies in the budget, so.
Okay.
We didn't, the last time I think, Norm, we contributed was Mike Nicholson. I think we contributed five thousand dollars or some, or some amount of money.
Somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, when I first started with you guys, you, you were taking uh five monthly from the account for, for the planner.
But that went away, and we haven't done it. And on top of that, which I didn't mention to the board, is part of the budget is. We're already contributing to the town by eliminating stu- our stipends, so. I mean, and I, if I'm not mistaken, the select board is doing it, and. I don't know what, and then Randy's, Randy's seventy-five dollars. So between the select board and the planning board, there is fifty-five hundred. Fifty, fifty-five hundred dollars, they could go back to that twenty-two four that's missing, so. Again, it's seven, finding seventeen thousand dollars to make him whole is what I'm looking for the board to ask the select board to do.
Yeah, and I, I would like to say one thing. So in in addition to all that's been said. We talk about where the town's at financially, where it's going, and then we look at how many homes and subdivisions can be on the books tomorrow. In this town. And the amount of land that's going to be eventually developed. To not have a town planner who knows what they're doing is, it's, it's, it's cutting our nose off despite our face at this point. John is incredibly knowledgeable in a lot of things that this town has failed to implement, enforce, understand. Not, not by any bad means, but just you gotta have somebody there who's in the office every day. To sit down with developers and say, no, you can't do that. Or, hey, here's our recommendation for this and that, because there's so much land in this town. And it's gonna get developed, and very soon, our median home price sales in this town are higher than Holden.
Yeah.
We are now second to contributing to the educational deficit of Wachusett Regional. So anybody who thinks that it's a good idea to cut a town planner, or let's just cut their salary. And then that's gonna solve our budgetary issues, doesn't know how to look five years down the road, ten years down the road. Maybe even a year down the road. So that's, and I, and I would, and I'm, I'm humbly, I'm, I'm not super educated on the intricacies of our town budget. But to cut a town planner. Given where this town is going, given the developable land that we have right now. Most of which is already owned by developers and can be submitted tomorrow if they so choose, to say, well. Let's cut back the town planner, and let's just, we just have a planning board, it'll be fine. That's, to me, that's insanity. I will leave my opinion out there. Sorry, I'm passionate about it, but I think that's just ridiculous. Given where this town is and where it wants to be and the overbudgets it has. Cutting the one guy who can sit there and help us filter all of these things. To make the town better is the most silly thing I've heard in a while. I'm done.
Does that look silly twice in my neck?
Way overlooked.
Unterrated word.
A- and to add to what Britain had to say, because he's in the office. Um, during the week to handle that, it's not only him being in the office as a planner. It's having twenty-plus years' experience to be able to make those calls to people he knows in the MMA. People that even call around and get opinions, like, look at the research that we've seen in the documents we just kind of. That, that's some experienced planner, and and again, John's doing a phenomenal job, but we get that same. That same workout of Dave George, too. And I really, the last two planners we've had. God bless us for having those, cuz in the past, we've just been using consultants. And not saying any of our consultants were bad, but it was consultant that we had X amount of hours. They weren't in the office. Well, they had office hours, but it was one day a week, maybe two for a couple hours, and that doesn't fill the need. Of a developer or an A and R coming in, or somebody to John's.
Or homeowner.
A- a homeowner, or somebody that wants to do a business, like John's already mentioned. He's got a, a lead on a potential uh business in town for Mr. Lucia's property. That's all positive, that him being there has helped, will potentially help this town grow with business, and I, I just don't wanna see that go away. And I'm afraid, um, and again, this is my experience, is when this happened last time with Dave. We basically put him in to go find another job. I don't want that to happen again. In fact, I will. Like Britain, come passionate about not letting that happen.
I think if you take it one step further with all the low-income housing mandates that are coming. We need a town planner, especially as our home values go up. Uh, we are going to eventually, we are the nail, not the hammer in that situation.
That's a good way to put it.
And to have a town planner to help us navigate that and get a desirable outcome for our town or our community and what we want. Is imperative uh in the coming years. So I agree with what all you guys are saying.
Agreed.
We're, we're certainly pretty much unanimous on.
So, um, do you want, is it okay if I draft a letter and work with Tim on exactly the wording of that letter, since he seems to have a really good.
No, I don't, oh, come on.
I got enough, I got enough headaches in my life.
I got enough. I got enough headaches in my life. I got my own business, so i- it's just. I mean, John, you can.
I'll I'll work on it with Norm.
I was gonna say, if you list out, I mean, you you've got three examples this this evening that we've. And then the other thing is, I really want you to highlight to the select board is all the work that you've been doing in the background on sixty eight. Cause we've been talking about that for five years and you're executing the damn project. You're executing the the plan now. So that needs to be the select board needs to know and and if they don't, well, then let's educate them. I just.
And I think it's more than just the here and now. It's understanding.
The future too.
Yeah. Isn't that coming?
The the planning board has finished their part of the master plan. We're just waiting for the open space committee to finish their portion of it.
We'd vote on it today if open space was finished, but we can't.
And and you know what was funny was I remember early in my tenure, um Austin and I sat down with representatives from CMR PC. And I love working with CMR PC, but they kind of gave us mixed messages. At first they said, okay, well, if you can get. Um all we need to to bring this across the finish line is the like objectives, the the objective table, the goals and objectives table. From the open space portion of this, we can insert it into your table and then we can insert the chapter later on in the text. Then all of a sudden someone down the line changed. No, 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 we can't do that. You have to wait until the open space recreation plan is totally complete before we can finish the master plan. So that's. That's been the holdup.
Sorry.
But I don't mind. I don't mind.
Can't open worms everywhere.
I don't mind helping John if you if you need help on that or if you want someone to draft it.
No, I I don't mind drafting. I just wanna make sure it's it's worded properly.
But again, again, I wanna stress. Where this town is and and how much land out there right now today is developable. It would be insanity to start cutting back in this position.
I'm happy to help with that too.
Okay.
That's just one again. Alright, I'm done.
Somebody else to work is I I'm the pain in the ass on this board all the time, so.
But you're so good at it.
Yeah, I know.
All the more reasons why I'm gonna have to at the air commission to push uh open property, have a CR on it. Conservation restriction.
Yeah.
Keep it open.
I like that.
So I will I will work on that in the coming days.
You're the only department heads during a cut.
Yeah, that that's normal. I was trying to highlight is.
I'm sorry, say that again.
He's the only department head that's enduring a cut.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, no, yeah, no. I didn't know that.
Yeah, that's that's a fact. Yeah, that seems uh.
Yeah.
Odd.
We we know why.
Yeah. Because we have money.
Yeah.
And and just to let the board know, again, I I looked at what was presented on Friday. The called the new revision of the budget. Other departments that have revolving funds aren't being asked to use it, so that got me even more wound up. So.
Yeah.
Again, that's enough said.
Well, you put that in the letter.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah, so I'll I'll work with you guys. I'll make sure I hit all the points you guys wanna hit.
And at any point, if you need us uh for whatever hearing or whatever it is, we're we're there. I'll be there.
The only thing I was gonna ask is if and John, don't I'm sorry to be the pushy guy, but. I'd like this to get to the select board for Monday's meeting.
Yeah, I will. I'll work on this tomorrow.
Yep, yep. No, no, I'm not being a pain about it. I just wanna get it in front of them early because. We're a month away from a town meeting or a month and a couple weeks. It's just gotta get done.
Community S bill. Could you make a big poster for for our booth? Support fully funding.
Yeah, yeah, John, I'll bring a tip jar with me on Sunday. We'll have a tip jar for donations. Yeah, no. Oh, yeah.
I can't do a GoFundMe.
Jesus Christ.
Just kidding.
Wait, that's not legal.
Alright, thank you, guys.
Okay, email from Tamika Murphy regarding.
Yes.
Harmony Place variance requests.
So what happened was um this has been going on for a few months now. It was discovered that. As you drive into Harmony Place, the units there be constructed on the right, um there's supposed to be a minimum thirty foot buffer between. The end of the structure and the property, the town property line. Well, the units were constructed too close to the buffer where. The units are fine, but if they wanna put decks onto the back of these structures, it's gonna encroach into the thirty foot buffer. So um the building commissioner rightfully so determined that they needed to go to the zoning board of appeals for variances. For each of those units. Um they could have done patios, but I guess the topography won't allow that. But decks are part of the structure, so um you know, they are going to the ZBA for variances to allow them to build decks within that thirty foot buffer and. Um there's been a lot of back and forth on this, a lot of communication between the applicant, my office, and also the building department. Um some kickback as far as what the process should be, but Harold has held firm that no, this absolutely has to go to the ZBA. It doesn't go back to the. HPDD HPDD review board, for instance. Um the ZBA is the governing body on variances, so. Um this is presented Tamika sent this information to be presented to the board. And if the board has any would like provide any comments on this uh prior to the public hearing for the ZBA.
Yeah, support, do it. I want the tax revenue. I mean, that's that's simple enough. They can't get occupancy permits.
Correct. Until they resolve this, correct, yeah.
And nobody's gonna buy the house until they get their from what I from what Mike Solos explained to me. Nobody's gonna buy a house until they get their uh deck and or patio.
Right.
Everybody wants deck, so these houses are sitting unsold right now and we're not getting any tax revenue out of it, so.
All of them?
It's not all of them. It's 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 just the ones along the right property line deck. I think it's units. Um I think it's up to unit twelve or fourteen. They're they're in sets of twos. They're duplexes, so I think it's up to.
Four can be sold that are on the.
It's none of the interior ones. This is the only place where they're that close to the property line.
There will be more variances coming. They can only get a variance for the structures that are built.
Right.
So when the remaining along that line get built, there will be more variances.
But it's well, it's well, that is a possibility, but they decide they've decided that this is the quickest course.
It's not a hardship. This is lack of planning.
That's and and with all due respect, yes, they did. They, you know.
I don't buy that.
Yeah.
I agree. I'm against that. Now, what I will say is so two questions. John, I did send you an email.
Yep.
A lot of communities differ, but it's pretty close to state law. If it's a means of egress without a roof, it's not considered part of the structure, meaning I E. That landing can be in the setback. I'm not gonna step on the building commissioner's toes.
So you're no, you're right, Britain, because Harold did mention that to myself and the applicant, saying that you're allowed to do. Three stairs, a landing coming out of that.
So long as it meets the steps required and the grade.
They're allowed to do the stairs. They're allowed to do a patio, cause a patio is not a structure. It's only if they want to do do a deck, so they're they're they want to put the decks on, so that's why they're seeking the variances.
So a ten by twelve deck, from what I've seen, actually is further past than what the steps to grade would be. So this is not a hardship. This is a, we consider it a hardship, cause we wanna sell homes. And people don't like at in a fifty five plus community, people don't wanna walk down seven stairs to get to a patio. That's where this deck is coming in to alleviate that situation. I don't think this is a hard. This is just an opinion. This is up to the ZBA and the building commissioner to determine one hundred percent. I'm not gonna step on any toes. In my personal and professional opinion, not a hardship. It's a desire.
So the planning board doesn't have to provide comments.
No, I'm just, we're having it here as a public.
Yep. Discussion.
Commentation, discussion, whatever you wanna call it, and that's my public comment.
I have brush hogged up there and everything else. My opinion is because how many picked up? The walking trail right next to the the bounds. That the town should go and make a deal with them to turn over X number of feet of that walking trail. For X number of feet up here, period. And that way there, the town will have a beautiful walking trail for everybody. Down along that line.
That's a great negotiating for the ZBA to like to put into uh.
Where's the walking trail? It's.
It's down here.
It's in the woods.
But when the vets hospital were there.
Yeah.
It's all trap rock. The right next to the fence is trap rock and that's where they used to walk, you know, all the. The vets and everybody that was in the hospital and whatever, they used to walk around the whole thing. So.
Property.
The property, yeah. So to me, for kinda allowed it.
To require it to be a public access. Is that what you mean?
Public access. The town of Rutland would accept. X number of feet for X number of feet towards the the Central Tree School. And and that's woods right in here. I mean, there was a, you know, a good depth of woods in there. So if you're only talking thirty feet or twenty five feet or something like that, I'd make a swap. Pass that on, would you please?
What? So I would appreciate if John, I'll need him to put this into a memo that I can provide to the ZBA. I don't know if that is allowable under their purview, though. That's the only thing.
Really wondering is.
I think they can only grant the variance based on the what the jail allows and and to 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 Britain's point.
Well, it's it's. It's between, it's too bad, because between the town of Rutland owning that property, so the select board. And RDIC trying to negotiate for them and all that, you know. To me, that would be a, you know, a lot easier.
I guess that's something Britain, again, I'm gonna fall in your construction experience if if the ZBA got this application in. And they were uh on the fence about hardship versus requirement. And there was an option to come up with a condition that part of the condition of approving this ZBA application. Is that the applicant will provide a walking trail.
Yes, so the ZBA can negotiate.
That's what I was getting at.
They can negotiate a um what's it called? It's not fair and true. It's like a fair settlement. Where the applicant and the town reach an agreement for. XYZ. It could be open space. It could be reconstruction of conservation commission area wetlands. It could be a lot of things. It does get very weighted when you do public access easements. Uh like trails, et cetera, that can draw a process out and create. Right, that's sort of, that's a slippery slope. The state doesn't like that a lot. Where you try to kind of hold someone over a barrel.
But we we on the RDIC had brought it up with them a long time ago.
Yeah, so there's so there's means to bring it back up. And of course, it's it's what what is the position of your applicant? Are they willing? To say, you know what? Look, we screwed up. What can we do to make it right? Or are they like, hey, screw you? No, I know, but I'm just saying as an example, like if they're like, hey, screw you, well, then that it's a hard and fast no. If it's a, hey, let's work together, let's do what's best. You you want these things, we want these things. Is there a middle ground that we can agree upon? If it gets contentious, that's a different conversation. But yes, the ZBA can ask for. Not grievances, um. Added added things.
A feature added to.
Right, so long as it's, you know, reasonable.
Concessions.
Concessions, correct. The gears were turning and slipping.
I mean, how do I say this? This is sort of out of our purview since since the RDIC took us out of the game. When they did that uh change of the, I don't call it bylaws, but the rules at the HPDS in involved and. Planning boards out of the game, but I would like to help because again, ultimately, this helps out the town. Forget us, it helps the town out, so. That's why I was thinking if if we could maybe make a suggestion of, yes, uh, you know. We're we're okay with the decks if the town gets something out of this, which is an update to, I I just don't know how to word that.
Well, that's where so before we would issue any sort of formal statement on something like that, you need town council to review that.
Yeah, cause I.
We're we're sort of saying, well, if you give us this, we'll allow this.
I don't I don't know if the planning board can make that suggestion.
See, that's what I'm getting at.
The Z I don't even, I'm not, I'm not even sure. I'm not even sure if legally the ZBA can do that as part of a variance. Because they're quasi judicial board. This is not site planner view special permit, so. I've never I've never heard of a ZBA asking for concessions back as part of a variance.
So so I have, so.
Okay.
But it has to, so there is very clear state of Massachusetts language that ZBA can absolutely approve something that benefits the town. Meaning um I've had ZBA approve affordable dwelling units. I I basically had created a nonconforming lot. With an existing home on it to in order to get XYZ lots. And the ZBA can grant that because there was a benefit to the town to do so. Meaning that the town had another affordable dwelling or another affordable unit on the books, so the ZBA had every jurisdiction to grant that. Even though I created a nonconforming.
That's fine. There's a benefit in the project itself, but what Tim's talking about is I'm not, I've never seen a ZBA say, fine, we'll grant you a variance, but you have to give the town this. As a condition of approval for a variance. Have you seen that?
But that, yeah, so that's exactly what they had done. This is town of Wayland. I can give you, we can talk offline and give you the address. It's exactly what it was. Where it's like, we're not gonna, we're not gonna approve these.
They they didn't, they didn't ask you to do anything additional. They they saw the benefit to what you were asking him to do. There's a difference. They didn't come and say, they didn't come and say like, we'll give you this variance if you put in a street light. That's what I'm talking about.
Or or, yeah, okay.
I'm that's why I've I that's I'm just not familiar with that.
Not this one next.
Alright, John, this is.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I guess when I'm. I can bring it up with Mike.
We really shouldn't get involved at all, but.
No, I in that level of detail, I probably agree.
Asking for an opinion, this is our opinion, but it shouldn't.
Britain, that's why.
Shouldn't drive the decision because that's.
Judicial oversight. I don't think we should be.
Right here that are on them.
Yeah.
Okay.
I I don't.
I'm just saying, I don't know.
On the review board.
We're on the RDIC.
Yeah, but you're not.
I'm not.
You're not on ZBA though, so.
So wh- what I was thinking, instead of us giving any formal. Recommendation is ZBA, why don't we send this to the RDIC as ideas for them to discuss it with their internal people and the ZBA? That's what I was getting at, staying out of this.
This is a ZBA thing because this this developer was really pushing for, well, we want this go back to the HPDD review board. And Harold's like, no, 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 no. This does not go back before the RDIC or the review board. They will have to amend this site plan approval. If they get their variances and then go back to the that go back to the HPD. But right now, this is the ZBA, so. I don't know if it'd be appropriate to recommend that they pull the RDIC into this.
John, can I back up one minute?
Yeah.
Who who has asked in official capacity for us to even comment on this?
Well, this gets, I mean.
It's our bylaw.
Yeah, it's a bylaw.
So our zoning bylaws require that for variances, that the zoning board of appeals seek opinion from uh the planning board and the board of health.
And does that include a public notice that we're gonna be reviewing these? Or is this just a general offline?
In general, so we do post a notification for the public hearing for the zoning board of appeals. But there's no language that states that the planning board or the board of health will also be discussing it because we refer to. The that language of the zoning bylaw in the notice. So if somebody actually reads it, they'll see that.
Understood. The applicant has been notified that the planning board is discussing it tonight?
They, yes, this has been a very, very inclusive process between all of those.
Make sure, okay.
Yes.
I thought it was interesting that we were discussing it and they weren't here. That's all.
Well, no, I I in my experience, the applicant isn't normally invited to something like this. It just goes to the planning board for your feedback.
It does show that they have a public hearing already scheduled too.
Yeah, no, that's that's next week's, yeah.
There's a deadline.
Oh.
Yeah.
Next.
Next Thursday, yeah.
So we kind of set our piece and we move on.
And if the board, if the board.
Not gonna issue a letter, right?
Well, you can if you want to. It's up to you.
Yeah, but is that etiquette? Like what's?
So in the past, usually if if the board had no comment, the planner would send me a letter and say, the board had no comment. And then I have documentation for the file to prove that the board did discuss it and they just didn't have a comment. That's what the health agent gave me. Was I have no comment. This is public water and sewer.
So if we did have a comment.
You could provide it. Absolutely.
If if we wanted to, I and just my opinion is we would stick specifically to the hardship, non hardship. Ten by twelve deck. I I would be a little more reserved to try and say something about the trails or public access. But that's just me. It's one man. Um I don't see this as a hardship. I see it as lack of planning. Um and we should not, we should not be approving variances based off of poor planning as a hardship.
They are applying or as a hardship.
That's what I read in the application.
Excepting, you know, the the walking trail. That doesn't. Doesn't change the hardship.
Yeah.
Normally, and even and even in cases like this, financial hardship is not supposed to be. Normally, and even and even in cases like this, financial hardship is not supposed to be considered rate.
It's supposed to be.
Nobody cares.
It's supposed to be hardship based on topography of the land, something physically that is limiting.
Shape.
Them from do, yeah.
Soil.
Yes.
Blasting.
Yeah.
The town property line.
No, not really, bec- well, here's the thing. And and this question came up. I got an email from Mr. Sullivan during this process. Asking, asking if we could change the thir- reduce the thirty-foot buffer. Like, no, first of all, that was go to town meeting. Why would you change that when most communities in this type of zoning? Especially when it, when it abuts a, you know, residential zoning or whatever, or a school, the buffer is way more than thirty feet. I think thirty feet is very generous. In most towns, it's fifty to a hundred feet. So that's the type of thing where it's like, to your point, Britain, it's like, okay, um, you know. Why, why do you want to take away this buffer, reduce this buffer because somebody put a building where they weren't supposed to?
Or they didn't have topographical survey and they made a ballpark, yeah. I I don't see it as a hardship. That would be the only thing if if the board were agreeable, that would be my only feedback. That's just, again, I'm one man.
I mean, to. I think, I think we need to take this off the next Thursday's meeting with Mike.
Yes.
Cause I like the ideas, but I I I'm I'm tempted to, from the planning board's perspective of having no comment. Uh, email sent to to Mika from John.
So you don't, so you don't want the planning board to provide a comment?
That's my opinion, that's my opinion for the board. And then Dick and I'll have to, all these good ideas that we've talked about. Needs to be presented to the R D I C and let them decide what they want to do as a comment.
I have to agree.
With the Z B A, cause I'm presuming they'll go there to help Harmony Place, that's my guess, but. You're right, the only letters come from the Florida Health and from the uh, planning board. I think we should have a.
Is there, is there motion for a no comment?
Um, just one quick thing. I mean, the only thing it's. Like the future, talking about the future, they're gonna be, how many, I mean, there's like.
Hundred forty-something, yeah, it's forty-two, forty-four.
Yeah, so I mean. If they can't reset the line now before they build the rest of the, I mean, if. You know, obviously, the the road is kind of in there already, but if. It's crazy, this is gonna come back, not maybe all those times, but.
Well, no, it's it's only gonna affect, I think, about fourteen units. The rest are not affected because of the way the the property line is.
Wait till you get to this side on phase three, I think you might have the same situation. Over here on phase three.
No, I don't think the unit, the units aren't, the units aren't that close, Tim. I looked at the plans.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not that close.
And I don't know what that bounds is.
Honestly, anyhow, I just.
Okay, so, so.
So what what is the pleasure of the board?
Do I have a motion? No comment.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. I will send that tomorrow. Okay, so now we are on to under planners report the agenda for the bylaw subcommittee. There's not a lot here, just kind of updates for the board.
Yep.
So we do have two meeting minutes that we can now approve because Dick is here.
Yes.
That we couldn't approve previously. So May twenty-second and June twenty-sixth of two thousand twenty-four. So if you want to look at those minutes, please and uh, approve them, that would be delightful.
Norm, I'm gonna have to have you do May twenty-second because I wasn't here. And the twenty-sixth, so. Both meeting minutes, I'm dropping in your lap because I wasn't here.
I'll have to, I'll have to send you a copy of the plan because this is not your.
Yeah, we have three.
I think I have it electronically. I'll send it to you. Yeah, that'd be great.
Do I have a motion to accept May twenty-second minutes?
So moved.
Uh, I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Um, just reading real quick to see if I do have my comment in this, in this meeting. I think my, just in the last paragraph. You know, we did briefly talk about parking for a possible music venue, you know, uh, when I was rereading this, I just wanted to add a comment today would be. Um, this site, which is the Oak Meadow.
Keith, if this is something that you said during the meeting, that's fine.
Okay.
But you can't add anything, you can't add anything after the, after the fact, that's.
Maybe at the very end, I think. Not reasonably discussed for you there. Okay, yep, no discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I got stain. And let's see, minutes of. June twenty-sixth.
The motion to accept the meeting minutes of June twenty-sixth for the bylaw subcommittee. Second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so this is the draft of the accessory dwelling by law. We're gonna have a public hearing on April eighth. Now, this is the clean version. Austin had wanted, and the town clerk asked for, you know, a version that shows all the markups with the bold and strike through. What I asked, what town councils agreed to is, I don't mind having that as a backup, but one thing that I've, and talking to people that they agree on is. I want this worded as a deletion and a replacement because there are so many changes that I don't want people getting too lost in. Crossouts, bolding, strike through, all that stuff. So um, so in essence, this is just um. This is a bylaw that will, and town councils are reviewing this and they've they've made their comments on this. So this is town council approved. This is a bylaw that will satisfy the state requirements. Um, but I feel, um, give the, give the, give the board enough leverage when it comes to potentially multiple accessory dwelling units. Which is the issue that's really, that's really causing for towns because, um, you know, yes, the state would preferably love to see. Towns allow single accessory dwelling units in all residential zoning districts without any site plan review, but. We have it as site plan review, we are allowed to do that. And again, for the same reason, we wanted to memorialize minor home occupations and signs in non-residential zoning districts. So we can track these and have a file on them. Um, so in case we have issues with them. So basically, this is a very simplified version of what we have with the tweaks that will satisfy the state. If now, right now, our bylaw, I think, is a little bit complicated because there's the two different levels of A D U's, which is basic and expanded. This basically classifies all the A D U's in the same category and basically gives them a maximum gross floor, a maximum square footage of nine hundred square feet. So this takes away the forty percent of the gross floor area and the, you know, all that stuff. It's basically a little bit stricter than what we have now for square footage. Again, it basically, it does, it doesn't, you know, it, the state doesn't allow us to do, and I'll have a PowerPoint presentation at our public hearing on the eighth. I didn't bring it with me tonight because, again, I want to wait for the public hearing. So I'll explain exactly what the state. Guidelines are and what we're allowed to regulate, what we're not allowed to regulate. But the big thing is. The special permit for multiple A D U's, and I was talking to Norm about this in the office recently, where if you go to our zoning bylaws, the zoning bylaws have the language. That allows the planning board to potentially deny multiple accessory dwelling units on the same lot. If, for instance, the board feels that it's not in character with the surrounding neighborhood.
Yeah.
That it's creating too much traffic or making things too dense, or if it's, you know, developed too densely uh, developed. So the language is there in our zoning bylaws if the planning board wants to use that. If it feels that it gets a proposal for multiple, multiple A D U's on the same lot that is not appropriate. I think we had a woman in here at one of our discussions who brought up a point that I think the board agreed with, where, well, I have like forty acres. What if I want to put like a couple of A D U's, one attached to the building and then one in the loft of my garage? I think Tim said, you know, yeah, we don't have a problem with that because of all the space you have. And it's not gonna encroach any further and things like that. It's not gonna encroach on the neighbor. So it gives the board wiggle room where if there is something that comes forward that the board just feels is not appropriate. I believe that there's the leverage for the board to be, to have grounds to deny something that just does not fit the neighborhood and is gonna be too intrusive.
Well, plus it must also pass Title V.
Well, yeah, that's, that's not our business, you know, they, yes, they do have to pass Title V and they do, they may have to expand the septic system and they not, they may not have the area to do it. Or they may not be able to afford to do it. So that's gonna be a mitig- a limiting factor potentially.
And personally, I would like to see something other than town. Any town personnel or out, I need an outside firm to do it.
Well, again, that's, that's not, that's not for this. Yeah, that's not, it's not us.
We talked to him about that. We were like, you're gonna have to look at, when we get into the town area with, if if, to Britain's point, if the A D U start rolling in. How's that affecting our water and sewer system?
That's a good question.
He's gonna have, he's gonna have to get Sampson, Weston and Sampson involved in this mess. And not only that, it's also the Muscat Pog watershed. No houses allowed in that area at all. So I guess what I'm gonna ask is if everybody can take a look at this for the next bylaw subcommittee, this is sort of homework.
Yes, for the next meeting on the eighth. That's when we're gonna have the public hearing on this. So so again, I tried to keep this as simple as possible. Again, complying with the state because we had a deadline of February second, which we've delayed by having this public hearing. Yeah, keeping it open until town meeting. But to the point that came up at the last meeting. I really, I really don't think the town should take its chances and gamble on not adopting something. Because if it doesn't, then that means that somebody can walk into Harold's office.
No, I think everybody's on board with you on that.
Yeah, so, yeah, I don't wanna see that happen.
We got some things.
So again, to the point, we, the discussion we had for the, for the truck traffic for for Hilltop Estates, there are times where, you know. You you're not gonna, you know, you know, the state puts you in a tough position, you know, and I do believe that over the years, it's been one of my frustrations as a planner. It's become increasingly difficult for towns to regulate their own land use. And this is probably the most egregious thing that I've seen in my twenty-five years where. I told the board before at a previous discussion, normally what the state does, whether it's, you know, whether it was medical marijuana, adult use overlay district. Um, even M B T A community guidelines for multifamily housing, they will go to communities and say, okay, communities. You need to pick an area in your town. We're gonna leave it up to you, but you have to pick an area of a reasonable size. Sometimes they'll dictate a minimum size, but they'll leave it up to you. This is the first time I've seen the state say, no, 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 this has to be allowed everywhere you allow single-family housing. That's a first for me. That's a first. And I think the state's become, uh, really starting to cross a line in terms of micromanaging.
Called overreach.
Yeah, I I agree.
Second page D, protected use A D U. A D U that is non-conformative zoning.
Where are you, Dick?
D.
D, uh, item, or paragraph three, or line number three.
Oh, I did, yep.
And to me, for granted, no way.
Yep. So again, that's a very frustrating part of my job is sometimes I find myself between a rock and a hard place where. I have to draft something, I have to propose something that I may not think is great, but. Uh, so I do the best I can to propose something that is going to protect the town. And that also means protecting the town against. A flood of these things coming in and being unprotected. That's not a wise move either, so.
What is the, and I'm just devil's advocate here. And something like that, where we're specifically saying that we will allow something that is non-conforming to zoning, what if we strike, just strike that?
Yeah.
And it's out, now, I know that the state has required language, or if it went in an appeals period, it would get overturned.
Well, the thing is, I think.
If we, but by having that in there, I'm sorry, let's interrupt, but by having that in there, we're saying automatically, yes.
Let me check with town council, because this is a definition that town council inserted because it's a state definition.
Understood, but we're, I guess, you you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Do, like, as as devil's advocate, we're putting in there and we're saying, we can't fight it because we're gonna lay over and take it. Well, if we don't have it as language in there.
Right.
We're still gonna take it, but now they've gotta, now they've gotta go through a process to get it there. They've gotta appeal it, our decision.
Yeah, so.
They've gotta fight, they gotta put money where the mouth is, take it to, take it to the state.
Town council, because you're right, this is basically saying that you can put an accessory dwelling unit right on the property line and you don't have to meet setbacks.
And we're okay with it. That's, that's all I'm saying. It's not.
Right. So let me, let me check with town council before the public.
Yeah, but you can't, yeah.
But you can't put a deck on, right?
H is, H was another one that really.
Also, I might have town, ask if town council can attend this public hearing if we're gonna get questions like this.
To.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's money well spent.
You're ahead of the game because I haven't had a chance.
Just for the homework.
Your homework is ahead.
That uh, protected A D U definition, that's a.
He's a state definition.
It's a, yes, but when it's inserted into this document, it's essentially. Draws back to M G L that essentially goes to whatever they. It's a global term we have to use to reference, M G L forty-eight sec- subsection three. And that's all their rules that they just implemented on us, right?
Yep, that they dropped on towns. And believe me, I've, I've attended multiple, multiple webinars on this. And I gotta tell you that the 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 discussion that comes up in the chat boxes, towns are not happy about this. And it's raised, it's open, speaking of opening a can of worms, there are so many questions that the state doesn't have answers for. And we're told, well, they're gonna come out with guidance at some point. Meanwhile, you're basically putting us on the spot to pass this, pass this, pass this. And I know towns.
That's why.
I I know towns, this was dropped on us in late summer, early fall. I knew towns, I I worked with somebody who was an intern back when I first started O C P C, she's a town planner. They had something approved at town meeting within like a month or two. I'm like, what? It's like, so I I, there are towns who basically said, okay, and they just, they just took whatever the state did and they passed it.
So that, uh, again, that's where, like I said, devil's advocate. We're, we should not include any of that language, in my personal opinion, in this bylaw. Because it's, it actually self-conflicts. So if you look at number four, item H. Protected use A D U will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformity of the neighborhood shall be required. Well, you have just directly conflicted yourself.
Yep.
With the previous.
So let me have town council at the public hearing.
Yeah, and I'm not, like I said, I'm not trying to like.
No, 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 no.
More difficult.
I agree with you.
Draw this conversation out tonight. I'm just saying, like, I think we, I think less is, I agree, we have to have something.
Yep.
Bottom line, but let's not give them the farm.
But this has been part of the.
We're just trying to sell an answer.
Part of the problem this town has had is they've passed bylaws that are flawed and it ends up coming back to bite the town.
I don't disagree, but if it's state law, they're gonna get it anyway. But now we gotta make them go fight for it.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, would they?
And it will be hung up in court because, again, those two items could be argued against each other.
So I've gotta warn you, and you probably already know this, when you ask this question, town council is gonna push back because.
A hundred percent, because that's, that's a lot of work for them.
Well, no, no, no.
Deal with it.
Well, no, no, no. They they tend, they tend to support whatever the state wants towns to do in general, I find. So, you know.
Then, yeah.
Because, because I, because Austin, Harold and I had a Zoom chat with Amy Questle of town council months ago. When this first dropped last, last year. And she was, she was conciliatory that, yeah, I know, yeah, I know, but.
She wouldn't fight for it.
Yeah, so we, so, don't be afraid to fight back with town council, that's what I'm saying. Don't be, don't be afraid to push back.
So my last comment with what you're saying is someday if. Homeowner sues town over, maybe not how we're writing it, but then the state will use that as a model for precedence and then they'll be like.
We won't be the first, but yes, I know what you're saying.
How it's gonna be pushed. That's how they're gonna let the system document what protected use is.
But we're already, so in in my personal humble opinion, at, not an attorney, but we're kind of rolling over with the language here. We're just rolling over, showing our belly. And we're like, all right, yep, we're good, the state's good, that's our, that's, that's our daddy.
That's what, that's a definition I didn't have in there. I think town council added that in when I sent it to them. And again, not realizing, wait a second, this contradicts further down in the document, so.
I just, I I don't, I don't disagree, like, at the end of the day, if it's, if it's mass law, it's mass law, but let's just not give away the farm right off the bat.
Right.
That's just one man's opinion. And I'm done.
So, so anyway, so, yeah, so take a look at this in more detail over the next couple of weeks. Um, I'm gonna try and keep that agenda light because we have two public hearings and this is gonna be a fairly intense one, obviously. Um, so I don't foresee a lot of stuff coming in between now and then, so it should be a fairly light agenda other than these public hearings, I'm thinking.
Just got the two correct, the battery and then this one.
This one. And the battery one is, Dick pointed out things, so I'll get to that in a second when we get to the battery energy.
All right, if that's it, we'll move on to the draft battery energy.
So this is basically, we're at the, we're at the one-half yard line. And um, so. Basically, Dick just pointed out some typographical errors on that everywhere it says A C should say D C.
Correct.
And I think that's, that's basically it. Now, Dick said something previous to this meeting, looking at the table on the third. Previous to this meeting, looking at the table on the third page, saying that it should be a special permit required everywhere. I don't, I don't think that, I don't think the ADU's office would like that.
I, I was, because I, special permit costs money.
We need fees.
I know, I know.
Money.
But, yes, yeah, so, but it's allowed with site plan review.
Yeah.
So if we have a site plan fee, there you go. So there you go, you just, you just.
Nobody's gonna fight a two hundred and fifty dollar fee.
But, yeah, yeah, so.
But this is all my.
But again, this gentleman, remember, this was ninety five percent done when I started a year and a half ago, so. We can, we can sit and nitpick these things to death.
Get something out the door.
Yeah, let's.
And just to let you know, um, I did go to DEP this morning and had a discussion down there with them. About and handed them this copy, he's, he says, you have to be kidding me, really? He says, you'll be hearing from me. I said, well, either me or contact John at the Rutland Town Planner. So, because I had other things on, on the list besides this. But they were, he was very pleased about the fact that somebody brought it to him to look into.
He meant that negatively, like.
Yeah.
You'll be hearing from me.
I, I, I just, I'm just wondering why. I mean, this has been done in other towns, so I'm just wondering why Mass DEP has, has an issue with this one.
They may not know about it.
No, but, but why do they have an issue with this one?
No, they don't. What he's saying is it was a great job, right?
No.
No, they don't.
He's, he's looking through it. My main reason for taking it to him was because of the watershed areas that we have in town here.
They own most of them, right?
Pardon?
They own most of them, or DCR.
Well, these, uh, DCR does, not DEP.
Yeah.
So, so let me ask you this, just out of curiosity.
Yeah.
This has been in the works for over a year and a half.
Yeah.
Why is this coming up now at the eleventh hour? That's a little frustrating. You, the bylaw subcommittee started this, like I said, this was ninety percent done when I started, so this has been in the works for two years. Why is this coming up now? That's a little frustrating.
Just the way I, I look at it, because I spent too damn many years on the Way River Advisory Committee, too many years on ConCon. And, and, and to me, to look at some of this stuff.
But this should. This, this issue should have come up a year and a half ago.
Right, well.
Well.
I thought we covered some of the environmental issues that.
Yeah.
I mean, we've discussed this in detail.
Here it says, it, you know, it was talked about municipality. Can't go right and have anything done, and I said, no. Because of the fact of, of Muska Park watershed cannot have any building on it, not only that. I went to the substation and it just pitches right down towards the water, so. I, like I told.
But if, but if there can't be any building there, then it shouldn't matter if we have this bylaw. They can't build there.
We have a zone A.
And this would be non.
Can you?
So that would prohibit someone from doing this anyway, so it's nothing to do with this bylaw.
Particular property, yes.
Right.
Not to have anything to do with substations, cause that's a tier three.
Correct.
But I, the one thing, and maybe I explained this wrong, these are defined as AC systems, not DC.
Oh, so they are AC, so, so that, they shouldn't be changed to DC?
No, but.
So this is, this is where, again.
No, they produce DC, but their output to the grid is AC.
So, so, so.
The, the, it's being done inside the area. Your transformers are always out by the roads.
No, no, these transformers will be, the DC, the, the DC to AC, and then the feed. From that, from that system, will actually have a transformer inside.
So hold on, so I shouldn't change these ACs to DCs? It's basically the way it is, is the way it should be.
Batteries DC, I've never seen an AC battery.
No, no, the batteries are DC, but see, they.
Battery energy storage.
Yeah, so wh- what, what the batteries do is they take all of the power from the solar panels, bring them in. And then that is converted, not inverted, converted to AC, and that's what goes out onto the grid.
Right.
So inside the facility is where the DC is basically made. It comes into the battery, which is inside the buildings, and then that's.
Converted.
Converted to an AC signal, goes to a transformer.
There you go, okay.
Transformer then goes out to the grid, but that transformer is physically inside.
So, my advice is, Dick.
And not on the top, not outside.
Dick, Tom Corbett is gonna be at this public, Tom Corbett is gonna be here on the eighth.
Okay, we need to make sure I'm correct, because that's how, that's been, that's been my knowledge of solar.
So if you, if you go, if you go to solar, and you wanna transfer to the grid, you have to go through an inverter.
Yes.
Right.
But that.
That, that happens at wherever the stage of that battery is, so you're not gonna go. You're not gonna put out to the grid unless it's AC.
Correct, you can't.
Okay.
Going from the inverter to the grid is inside the line, because you just can't.
Inside the storage unit.
Yes, correct.
Yep.
So you're gonna have a two hundred, uh, uh, to this point, Dick, you'll have fifty to two hundred and fifty. Uh, KW, or they could actually go KVA, transformer that takes, that takes that inverted signal, it's already been turned to AC. As they call it, the primary power coming into the one side of the transformer, then the secondary going out is what's going.
And, and the other thing that's a little bit frustrating is, we put this aside because it wasn't quite ready for the special town meeting last fall. So this has been sitting for several months, and now this is coming forward as we're getting ready for a public hearing in two weeks. To me, that's frustrating, because I'm trying to get things put together here and bring this forward. And so I really wish this had been done, if there is an issue with Mass DEP, months, if not last year. Instead of two weeks before a public hearing and having town meeting in what, six weeks? It leaves no time to adjust and.
We have a lot of watershed area around here, and battery had a lot of problems burning up before and everything else. And I still say, because it, it doesn't say in here that if there is a fire, you have twenty four hours to clean it up, and to me.
That's part of the safety plan that they would have to file with the fire department.
Should be in here.
It is.
It is, it's. Twenty four hours?
There's not twenty four hours.
It doesn't say, it doesn't.
Time limit. Yeah, there's no time limit.
If they were proposing to build in an area that was within the watershed or, or the wetland buffer, they would still have to file.
Correct.
Permitting or variance.
True.
Anyways.
But I'm talking, this is zone A and, and.
Right.
Not just a, a swamp or something like that, but this is.
But to point, Dick, if there are areas where they're not allowed to build anything, then they won't be able to build these. So it's, it's a moot point. They won't be able to build anything, so these aren't a concern for those areas.
Well, that only pertains to Muska Park watershed.
Okay.
Cause that was the way it was written up in the bylaw, what the town wanted or whatever.
We put this in here, Dick, um, under one sixteen, prior to addition of building permit, the owners gotta provide all the project information, so. Harold's gotta be completely confident with that system that's being put in.
The fire department.
Well, and he should be going through all that with that automated system that we have that I still don't understand. So I think this is the check right here, when, when he's talking for the, uh, monitoring and maintenance before the. The best owner, which is the, uh, um, battery storage owner, has got to basically provide all this information. To the local safety officials, police chief, fire, building inspector. So before that building permit issues, they could stop this whole project, if they so desire, cause they see a problem.
Correct.
That was our, that, when we were doing this, that was our get out of jail free card for the town. These three people can, can put a kibosh on that project right there and then.
And if they, if they are developing in an area that's of environmental sensitivity, to Tamika's point, they'd have to go to the ConCon. Would have to approve it. They'd have to go to the right.
ConCon. Don't get me started there.
It does say secondary containment, which was.
Yes, that was a big sticking point.
That was one I, I was adamant about putting in, is that they had to have secondary containment, cause I was afraid that if, if. And again, this was two years ago when foam was the predicament, but. I talked to Seth and Seth said secondary containment's good, because then everything will be contained in that area. And then if they're doing cleanup, it's within the area.
So that's my recommendation. Tom Corbett's gonna be in attendance, I confirmed that today, at the public hearing on the eighth. Any questions can be.
Anybody else got a question, cause I've got just one or two more, and I wanna make sure Tom and I are on the same page, and if it is, we're good.
Okay.
The hearing.
Okay, cool.
So.
Excellent.
Um, bring these with you, cause I, these questions are good for Tom to answer. Cause I, I beat this thing to death, and I thought we'd covered all of our bases by giving the town officials the opportunity to kill this project. Um, if there was problems, and they, and they can't move forward with the building permit until they've got all of the ConCons, the DEPs. If they're gonna be in that close to that area.
Right.
That was my understanding, cause I didn't want the same thing. I don't wanna put a battery storage facility next to a wetlands.
Right, nobody wants that.
And then that thing burns down, and now I've got the whole damn place contaminated, so.
I'm gonna say blame Tim.
Can we do that after May twelfth?
Oh, and by the way, um, Tim and I are gonna be, um, at the planning board table at the expo on Sunday.
Anybody else, please, um, this, it's eleven thirty to three thirty.
Eleven thirty to three.
Okay, thank you.
Eleven thirty to three, there's plenty of room, six foot table.
Yep.
Got a nice sign now, which I haven't, I'll get to that when I get done with the, uh. We, we got a nice planning board sign that can be used multiple, not just at this, but anytime down the road. And then we have our own metal planning board sign that goes on the table. And then John's done a phenomenal job of putting together, uh, little placard signs with, uh, the QR codes on.
No, Tamika did the, Tamika did the QR code and she did the flyer, so, and I tested the QR code, so that's gonna be the kickoff for the Route sixty eight survey. So Tamika helped me set it up, uh, through Microsoft Forms, is that it? And, um, she did the flyer with the QR code.
Excellent.
And it works, so I've tested it out, so, um, that's gonna be the kickoff for the, this, cause starting on Monday. We're gonna start distributing the surveys electronically and physically, and we're gonna keep it open through, uh, through town meeting in May, so we're gonna keep it open.
And then we got a needs board with the town on it.
Dick's already given me his comments, he does, he, he's against all of it.
Pretty much so, because of the watershed and up in, uh, Northern Pot on sixty eight. Most of that land, DCR, is all watershed into the Way River.
So he's jumped the gun, I already have.
Down here at the Holden Town Line is Worcester Water Supply.
But there are sections to be developed.
No, the water also runs into Boston.
Yeah.
Do, do we need, do we need pins?
I, I, I've thought about it, I don't, I don't know if it's a good idea for little kids to.
Oh, I, they definitely need.
I'm gonna have a zoning map.
And if they're, it's sharp things.
If they're young kids, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna point, you know, try and point out where they live and just to kind of, if they come up with the parents and everything, so.
There's a brook.
But I have copies of the two zoning bylaw amendments too, that people can review and, and, and look at while they're.
What's that? Okay, I, I'm.
Okay.
Shit, okay.
Yeah, there's a septic system.
So is anybody else, cause I was gonna bring some chairs, cause I know they're gonna provide chairs, but their chairs suck.
No, no, I know, I know.
I was gonna bring some comfy chairs.
And no heckling, please.
Yeah.
Once the shit gets in the.
So is anybody else?
Where does it go?
Goes right there. Three, yeah, the board members that can answer questions. It's a bathtub. Ours is indoors, we're not outdoors, so. So.
Alright.
The only other thing I had is, um, um, I sort of went beyond my purview, but. Spent three hundred dollars for signs for the planning board, and I wasn't really looking to do it myself, so I was wondering if I could get reimbursed. If you guys say no, it's on me and it's my call, but I went out and got a, uh, one of those plastic signs that says town.
Like the sandwich board type.
Plastic can be reused, uh, Franny Steiner, I use local business to do it. And then, uh, I got a metal sign, it's about this big, John's got all of it, that says, uh, planning board on it, so we can use that. In fact, I was gonna ask you to break the night so we could put it up there.
Ah, yeah, that would be funny.
Anyhow, so.
Use it for the meetings now.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too, but.
I think the board should have nameplates.
No, no, no. So, uh, the, the total bill from Fran was, uh, three hundred dollars for the, uh, um, both signs. And I was gonna ask the board if I could use revolving funds to pay for that. If not, I'm fine, I'll, I'll eat it, but I thought I, I'm gonna ask.
I have no problem. Because it's going for the public event, I make a motion that it comes out of revolving account.
I'll second said motion.
Uh, let's see, is it planning board? No.
No, I don't have any money. I got nothing.
So I have a motion in the second, then a discussion. All in favor?
Aye, I'll abstain since I'm asking for the cash.
Yeah.
Tim, can you email me the receipt?
I got the invoice from Fran, I will scan it and send it to you.
If you can get this made by tomorrow, I can get it on Monday's warrant.
Okay, I'll do that. I gotta go find where I put it, cause Fran gave it to me and we were talking too much.
I have a small comment, just to add to those minutes earlier that I couldn't comment on. Um, just talking about the Oak Meadow, um, would be nice to see if the town. Cause it, it mentioned parking in that site is, is close to center town, but you somehow working out down the road. Bussing people that come for Fourth of July and, and getting cars off the side of the roads and stuff like that, I mean, it's, it's not that far and. Could be used as a, something to think about down there.
Talk about an area.
Yeah, cause I mean, it, we get three to six thousand people here. For two to three days, so I mean.
Two thirds of the.
Yeah, in the square. Yeah, right in the center, so a place to put those cars, I mean, you'd have to figure out bussing and, and it would cost me actually money.
Yeah.
I don't know how it would work out, but it, it would be a good site.
Pick that up again, that's something we could talk about.
Yeah.
Yep, alright, and then the last, before I close out, any future zoning.
Zoning bylaw amendments, yes, so I do, I did do some research on minimum uplands for estate lots, because you had mentioned that.
Yeah.
So I do wanna pick that up, and what was the other thing I wanted to mention, uh, there's something, oh. I want, I would like to move the sign bylaws from the general bylaws into the zoning bylaws, cause I think that's where they belong.
I'm a hundred and ten percent behind that too.
So that's another one I would like to bring forward.
It's part of our review, so.
It is, and, and in most towns, it is in the zoning bylaws, so. I think it's a little bit confusing going back and forth between the general zoning.
John, should we have that discussion with the, uh, the bylaw committee?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, good one, it's not something that needs to be done now.
Yeah, I can, I can go.
One other thing I wanted to, it, and Keith, I love the comments in Oak Meadow, but is that dead? Are we, is, is, is there any more, I need to, I, I need to.
Doesn't have to be.
I don't, I don't wanna put a finger pork in it, but we're not seeing to be getting any traction moving forward.
Well, it doesn't have to be dead.
Yeah, but we can discuss that at another, at another meeting.
Yes, just that, I don't know, it seems, I, I think more than anything, with all of these other things that we've had on the table, it's just.
Let's get, then let's get these two through, get them finalized.
Yeah.
Did you have any, did, I was gonna ask John, do we have any, I thought we had some cleanup for this town meeting too. Bylaws, am I wrong?
No.
Okay, then skip it, I was at third base playing first. Then, uh, okay, if there's no other comments, I'll.
Oh, another one is, I, I, I do wanna look at, um, do the same thing I think. That we just did for site plan approval, the minor home occupations, I wanna, I do wanna tweak the language on, uh, signs in non-residential districts. To make it site plan review, cause I think it doesn't delineate that, it says review, so I wanna look at that to make sure that's consistent. So, yeah, you're right, that is a cleanup that I like to do.
Okay, um, then I will take a motion to close the bylaw subcommittee and go back to the planning board.
So.
Second. Vote.